I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gals Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So, we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there will be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
Well, my name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera at the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So, each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but, I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So, everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
Good evening, everyone. I would call this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council to order, and as always, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, motion approved, the agenda is circulated. councillor Conklin, second by Deputy Mayor Fugier, all those in favor. Motion's carried, thank you. We have a few announcements, couple of proclamations. So, again, these proclamations will be in full on the town's social media feeds and on our website. So, the first one is Access Awareness Week is May 26 to June 1, recognizing the importance of removing barriers for people with disabilities and to raise awareness and engage Nova Scotians on issues around access and inclusion. And May 28 is Menstrual Health Day, to reduce the negative stigma surrounding menstruation and to raise awareness of the importance of good menstrual hygiene management worldwide. And again, that is May 28, and both those proclamations will be circulated on our social media feeds. In terms of announcements, congratulations again to the Bridgewater Farmers Market that just opened their 15th season on Saturday. And so, they've been a few years at their location by the old arena. It was packed, parking lot was full, the street was full of cars for parking. It was busy, quite a few vendors sold out of their items, which is great. And then, the inside, I don't know if anyone went inside, but there's been some, you know, huge improvements in the lighting and paint and stuff like that. So, I think overall, everyone was pleased. So, again, big thank you to the board and the volunteers and all the people that put that market on year after year. But, of course, nothing could happen without the people who go to the market and support the vendors and shop local. So, thank you for frequenting the market. And I did, some people did ask if I got my breakfast sandwich from Airstream, yes, I did. Took it home and ate it, because it was so busy there was nowhere to sit, and it was as good as I had remembered, so, it was perfect. Any other announcements from members of council? councillor Tanner?
Just May 19 from Fort 8, there's the food truck party downtown.
That's right.
Yes, very exciting.
Yep, everybody's welcome. That is between Empire and Dominion Street. So, also remember that King Street will be closed, so there'll be a detour in place. Other announcements from council? I believe later this week, the pool at the LCLC reopens. It was a couple of days behind schedule, but it will, the plan is to reopen that this week, so, that's good. And a reminder, normally that closure would be in June, but they moved it forward, so, because somebody did say, "Is that mean it's going to close again for the regular maintenance in June?" No, this is in place of that, so that's good news. I might as well just raise this, because it came up a few times, because people have asked about Kinsman Field, and I don't know where this rumor started, so we'll just address it here. Some people have raised concerns that we have, for some reason, sold Kinsman Field to a developer to build housing. That is not true. So, if you've heard that rumor, it is, certainly, I don't think anyone of us have ever thought of that in any discussions that we've had. So, that is not true. It is very much staying for sport use. So, no changes, no change proposed. No one's ever come to us looking for it, to buy it from the town or change it to housing. So, if anyone's concerned about that, I hope that puts your mind at ease. All right. If there is nothing else, we have a few delegations, and I believe they're here already, so, I know we're a few minutes ahead, but we'll ask Karen Weagle to come before council and make a presentation about the tree canopies and wooded area behind the old BMA. So, just to remind, you have 10 minutes. That doesn't include questions from council.
Okay.
And when we receive delegations, we don't make a decision tonight. We will come back to the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, next council meeting. That gives us time, if we think of questions like tomorrow, then we can reach out and get those answers.
So, I'm on here.
You're right there, yep. You're good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and council members. My name is Karen Weagle, and I live on 147 Empire Street. And my husband and I are in the process of installing solar panels. The brackets are actually on, and we're waiting for the next step for the electrician to come. So, the efficiency of our solar panels on our property is significantly reduced because of the shade that is provided from the trees in the town's green area that is adjacent to the Bridgewater Memorial Arena that our property borders with. This is particularly during the months of mid-fall to mid-spring. My reason for presenting this before you tonight is simply just to request if the town would consider or even be willing to reduce the height of the tree canopies. When I set up the meeting, I did provide an estimate, and that was the only reason I did that, is we had Mayfair Tree come in to get an estimate for us. We had to do some work on one tree on our property, which they recommended to give us, you know, the best possible production with our solar panels. So, while they were there, I just said, you know, "Can you take a look at the trees over in there?" And that's how the estimate come about. So, I just thought, you know, I would get an idea and just hand that in to you. So, that's basically it. Solar panels have become a big thing these days, and I know a lot of people that are getting a lot higher production percentages out of theirs than what we are, but we still decided that we wanted to go with it to benefit us in the future into our retirement years when our income may be less. So, the other thing that I have with me that I didn't have at the time of setting up the meeting with you is a little support letter from the company, What's Up Solar. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them. So, they are the company that we chose to go with for our solar panels, and he has been there on our property and looked, so he did a little letter up, just, you know, stating what benefit, you know, he thinks that it would be for us. So, I have about seven copies of that, and I know, I wasn't sure how many, but I can just hand that out, and if I can submit that, is that okay?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. So, that's basically it. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from council? councillor Conklin, yep?
Are you installing panels on both sides?
No, just the backside, which is borders. They didn't really feel it was beneficial for us to put any panels on the front side of the house.
Front side, okay.
We kind of brought that to them a couple of times, because we wanted to get a higher production rate, you know, to save us more money on our Nova Scotia Power bill and, you know, looking into our future as well. But, they just didn't feel it would be, you know, beneficial enough to do that.
Councillor Thorburn? Yeah, I'm getting panels put in too, and I had the same comment. I thought there would be some on the east side of my house when the sun comes up in the morning, but it's there for just a short period, so I'm doing everything on the west side, the peaks and all that, plus, none on facing west, yeah, facing east.
Okay, yeah.
It seemed to be the thing.
Yeah, like...
And it's really, for me personally, is going to stabilize my power costs by going with solar. We won't get these big 6 and 8% jumps. As a matter of fact, it will be going down a little bit.
Yes.
Over time.
What we are hoping, in our situation, is, they estimated that we would produce about 55%. So, I know people that's getting a lot higher than that, but we still decided to go with it. And we are hoping with about 55% production rate that what we will save on Nova Scotia Power will be very close to our monthly payment for 10 years. So, that will kind of just hit it at zero. And then, after the 10 years of our, when our loan is up, then we will just be saving that money. And probably Nova Scotia Power rates are just going to be going up, so, in the future, not probably going down. So, that's kind of how we looked at it. Probably we waited a little bit late in life, because Clay is going to be 60, so we're looking at him being 70, you know, when the loan is finished, but still, we're still around. That's kind of why we looked at it.
So, you have one tree that you're changing the canopy up?
Yeah, we already did.
Right, okay. So, the other trees?
So, there's nothing else right on our property that was a concern. Everything else is kind of in that back wooded area there.
And do you know the, like, the difference doing that work or not doing that work has on your production?
I don't really have that, just that it would be, you know, make, you know, a significant difference, because some of those trees there are quite high and big, and we don't even really get a lot of sun at certain times of years, certain times of year in our backyard. It's very shaded because of all of the trees over there, which, you know, until we decide to get solar panels, you know, wasn't a big deal. Can I hand out these seven copies to, and maybe you can share?
Yep, yep. I mean, as long as Amanda gets one, she can scan it and send it to, make sure everyone has electronic copy too.
All right, I'll just hand out what I have out here, if you don't mind.
Thank you. That's perfect, thank you. I don't know if anyone else on council has other questions. councillor Caldwell?
I guess my only question is, the 55%, I assume the company based 55% on the existing shade cover that you have?
Yes, exactly, yeah. And they do all that with, you know, their drones and whatever. They did an onsite as well for us, but...
So, any changes which have a positive effect?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And maybe also, you know, beneficial to that wooded area over there. I know, in speaking with Mayfair Tree, I think they had been over there and done some work for you, possibly, because they had mentioned it to me, with some, you know, stuff that was old and was going to fall.
Yeah.
So, they did a little trimming over there, and then they just left the, you know, what's the shavings or whatever they, you know, on the ground to compost up, and just let it, you know, be, take care of it naturally.
So, I assume we would have to contract this in?
I think that would be a decision for council to make, if you're...
But, we don't have people on staff to, you know?
No, no.
No, sorry, that was my question. We don't have people on staff to deal with this.
We would contract that out.
Yeah.
And so, council does have a tree policy.
Yeah.
And so, normally, we don't remove trees unless they're dead, but you can consider...
And it's not really removing trees either. We're just talking about taking the can, you know, the tops off.
Right. So, council can consider on a case-by-case basis as well, so, outside of that restriction, so...
And I know there are lots of other companies out there who do tree removal, but the reason I provided Mayfair is that's who we use to do, to cut the top off of our one tree that we needed to have done, so, yeah.
Councillor Conklin?
Not so much a question for Karen, but for Tammy, I guess. Is there a precedent where we have done something like this before for homeowners?
During my tenure, we have had one request in the past, but we didn't end up removing the tree because the land got sold and then the developer did. That was on Glen Allen.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it was Ziegler property. So, they ended up removing the trees. There's a couple of trees that the budding owner wanted removed, and council had agreed at that time, but by that point, Ziegler had bought the property and cleared the land.
Okay, thanks.
Councillor Thorburn, did you have a...
Yeah, I just wondered, what would your efficiency rate be, this canopy, would it be...
Yeah, I don't know that exactly, and he didn't, I didn't state that exactly in his letter, just that it would improve our, but I don't have, you know, by how much it would improve.
Can we get access to that? Can we ask him?
I can ask him if we can get it, if we can get a number, you know. I don't know if it's one of those things that's really hard to tell, you know. Maybe it depends on how much they're taking down. I don't know much about trees and doing that, but to getting a number of how much better, but I can approach him about that.
Sure. I think it'd be nice to know that we're going to spend money there to find out what the difference is.
Other questions?
I know, yeah, I know it says in the, right up here, that includes ash trees, pine, and maple. Do we know, like, how, how, there's no pictures, but I'm just curious, is this quite a, quite an area that we're covering?
That's, it's just a little wooded area over there behind the arena.
Okay.
That, you know, kind of right there where the farmer's market is.
Right, right, I can visualize.
Did I speak, is Matthew here tonight?
No.
Oh. There had been, I think it was last summer/fall, Clay noticed over in there that there had been one of those trees, and there was a piece hanging down, and my contact, it's, I think maybe it was Matt, and just to let him know, because it could have been a danger to, there's kids over there running around during the market and people over in that wooded area all the time. So, somebody came and looked, and they emailed me back and said they couldn't see what we were talking about. So, then Clay went over and tied a piece of ribbon or something on it. So, then I think maybe that's how Mayfair ended coming in afterwards and taking some limbs down, just happened to notice it where it is kind of right there on our back line, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Just a question for our CEO. So, hypothetically, if we went forward, would we have to go up for tender or something?
Chances are that work would be under the tender, so we get quotes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do have a competitive procurement practice and policy that we have to follow. So, we would be, if council opted to do the work, we'd be required to obtain quotes.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Karen, for your extra documentation, your presentation. So, this will be on the next council agenda, and well, council will give direction at that time.
Okay. So, I will have an, like, somebody will let me know?
Yeah.
Either way?
Yeah, you can either come to the meeting, or someone, either way, someone will let you know.
When is the next meeting?
In two weeks.
27?
27, yeah.
But I would anticipate that you'll be contacted by staff prior to that to get a good handle on exactly what amount we're talking about.
Okay.
So, we can map that out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next delegation is Riley Kraschka. Sorry. And we're talking about more trees.
We're talking about more trees?
The other, the other end of the tree.
Yeah.
All right, you're welcome.
Good evening, thank you for making time for me. My name's Riley Kraschka. I live at 157 Empire Street. I'm here to speak to you about getting a tree removed and my septic pipes replaced. I did send photos into Amanda Shoup. I don't know if you have access to those right now.
Yep.
But, so, the first issue we've had with this tree was when we went to renovate our basement into an apartment. We needed to install a bathroom and kitchen. As we dug up the floor, we discovered tree roots growing out of the pipes, breaking them and draining into the ground under our house. You can see that in the first picture on the left there. We decided to replace all the plumbing under our house as a precaution, just from what we saw. More recently, my mom and I were looking to renovate our front yard and widen our driveway. Our front yard washes into our driveway every time it rains, and we would like to build a retaining wall for a proper drainage. To do that, some of the tree's main roots would need to be removed, causing instability to the tree. I contacted the Public Works and Engineering Department at the end of March, who informed me the tree cannot be removed unless it is dead. I offered to remove the tree myself, but was told I can't touch it. And lastly, our biggest and most current issue is a sewage backup in our tenant's bedroom, which happened April 30. I had to call an emergency after-hours plumber to come out and unclog the lines, as we couldn't use water in either of our units. There is damage to the wall and flooring, as well as contaminated furniture and destroyed personal belongings of our tenant, which we did have to trash. We've had an emergency cleanup crew in to decontaminate. However, the tenants are still unable to live there until the repairs to the wall and the floor is done. In the meantime, they have been cohabitating with myself, which has been less than ideal. But, this outcomes inconvenience all of our lives and not a tenable solution. When the plumber arrived, he manually snaked our pipes and pulled out strings of roots, which you can see in the middle photo there. And that's when he decided to go, and he rented the electrical snake to try to just clear our basement out. And he was successful, and that's the clump of tree roots you can see on the right there, that came out of our pipes. I have two plumbers, Eugene from Dayspring Electric, and he's the one who completed our original renovations, and Kevin Bushen from, Kevin Bushen Plumbing in Italy Cross, who did the emergency call. They both say the tree needs to go and our front plumbing needs to be redone. I've made an insurance claim, and they are helping us with getting the cleaning and internal repairs done properly. I also have Kevin coming in to do, install a check valve, to ensure when this does happen again, it will back up into the shower and toilet, rather than the bedroom and destroy the rest of the belongings. However, all parties have agreed that this will happen again, and the problem won't be fixed until the tree is removed and our pipes are replaced. My understanding, when my mom and I bought the house two and a half years ago, was that Empire Street was on the five-year list for a new sewage and water line before a repaving to get done. I'm wondering, in the meantime, if the town has a regular maintenance and cleaning schedule, and if the proposed maintenance of the sewage lines on Empire Street were taken into a timely matter, I doubt this situation would have occurred, and I'm open to any further questions on the matter.
Okay, any questions from council?
So, I, my question is just, have we been in this situation before? Do we know if we've had other, like, it's not uncommon for tree roots to go into sewer pipes, but where the situation is where it's a town tree in private infrastructure?
Private land, yeah.
Do we know if we've been in this situation before and what action?
I think we'd have to have engineering take a look at it and provide summit accounts for council in terms of options to address it. The issue is, the tree's not dead. So, if it's determined that roots are the issue and the only way to address that is to remove the tree, then that's a decision for council to make, since it's on town property. But, we can certainly report back to council at the next meeting with respects to this particular issue and what engineering would recommend be done in that case, and if we've dealt with this in the past with roots on town property, damaging private...
And is dealing, is dealing with the removal of the tree the only solution, or is there a solution to deal with?
The roots.
Whether it's rerouting the pipe or something else, so that we can save the tree while also making sure that the town-owned tree doesn't do this again?
One of the original reasons before the sewage backup happened was, we need to fix our driveway. There's no drainage. You can see from the picture that, when it rains, our front lawn is just washing into the driveway. So, we wanted to build a retaining wall, so we need to bring that back about one or two feet. But, there are some large roots going straight through that, and we would have to remove them, which would weaken the tree itself.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, so that probably requires staff to dive a little deeper into that. Other questions? Okay, so, oh, councillor Thorburn, yeah?
Not a question, but a comment. I believe that area there is where we're going to do some paving this year.
To Hillcrest, yeah.
There are some blue markings out front.
Yeah, blue markings for water, for the water lines.
Yeah, so we're doing some work on...
We're doing some work on that street.
From New York to Hillcrest.
Okay.
Okay.
Not sewer work, no, but we are doing some water line replacement and some paving.
Okay. So, this will require us to have, we have probably quite a few questions for staff.
Okay.
So, just like we said to Karen, this will come back...
If you want contacts with my plumbers, I can provide that as well, if you'd like to speak with them.
Yeah, that probably isn't a bad idea. So, if you could forward those to Amanda?
Yeah, I can email those to you.
That would be perfect, thank you. And then, if we have questions, we'll follow up with you as well, and then this will be back on the agenda in two weeks. And I'm sure council will have some questions for staff, just to kind of figure out if this has happened before and the action we've taken, what our options are.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to address council on any other topics? Come on down, so. The other delegation said 10 minutes because they announced ahead, so you have, you have two minutes.
Perfect, sure, I'll be quicker than that.
And that doesn't include any questions we have, so.
Yeah, for sure. So Gueye, hello, my name is Kay, I'm here on behalf of Lunenburg Pride. We're here to announce that 2024 Pride Week will be on July 7th to 13th. On April 2nd, we submitted to Town of Bridgewater staff an event application for our pride parade, for a post-parade pride kickoff celebration, and then of course, as per tradition, our flag raising that has happened the last few years. So we are coming as a delegation on the next town council meeting, but this week of events will have over 21 different events with about half of them happening within the Town of Bridgewater. We are very excited to be able to take questions and to give you a more of a detailed breakdown of some of our plans next meeting. And we're always very thankful for the historic and continuous support from Town of Bridgewater that we've experienced in the past years and hopefully moving forward as we continue to host events for the 2S LGBTQIA+ community in Bridgewater and in the SoShore. Well, Alio, thank you for this time to speak to you folks.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? I mean, then we're going to see them again in two weeks, but I know last year's parade, which was the first parade, was hugely successful, so looking forward to the presentation in two weeks.
Perfect, thank you folks.
Thanks for coming. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address council? Okay. Thank you for, for everyone who came before council, I know it's not always easy to get before a group of people and a bunch of cameras, but you all did really well, I appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to do that. Moving on, for council, we have the minutes from the April 22nd regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions with those? Hearing not in motion to approve the minutes, Council Tanner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier, all those in favor, those opposed, motions carried, thank you. Now we're down to 6.1, which is a public hearing, and so as always, I will refer to my public hearing notes, and I will recess the regular council meeting and open the public hearing. And I will note that all statutory requirements have been met and that council's decision is governed by the municipal planning strategy. And so on this item, we're talking about wastewater amendments under the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, and I will turn it over to staff, just as Nick is coming up. After the presentation from staff, there'll be a time for comments from the public, if there are any. We kind of go in an order, those in favor, those opposed, and any other comments, then I will close this public hearing, we will return to council session and council will make a decision, so, thank you. Over to you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So, excuse me, welcome to wastewater system capacity constraints, municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments. The proposed, I'm sorry, the purpose being to condition as of right development to require an assessment of wastewater or sanitary sewer capacity in the subject area of the development in question. Okay, so over time, assumptions have been made with respect to wastewater service infrastructure throughout the town. Design considerations included assumptions about future growth in combination with existing systems and zoning that had been in place for many years prior. In 2014, the town's planning documents were revised with an aim to maximize the use of existing infrastructure. The new zoning implemented in 2014 did not anticipate the rate and magnitude of development pressures to be experienced in Bridgewater from 2014 until now. The maximization of density permissions has resulted in the lack of capacity in the wastewater system to handle development. The 2018 sanitary stormwater master plan really started the conversation around wastewater capacity at the pumping stations and in the collection system. Staff began to require an offset for any new wastewater contribution to the system. Practically, this meant that each development needed to find ways to reduce additional wastewater that may be entering the sanitary system. Additionally, in 2018, the 2018 master plan included mapping, displaying sanitary sewer modeling results. Based on this modeling in 2018, the further realize, and further realization through subsequent studies, it was determined that pipe diameters around town were a concern, not only during wet weather. That's when the town started to require an assessment downstream of wastewater or sanitary sewer capacity for, for certain developments. Born out of the 2018 plan, the inflow and infiltration study includes practical testing to validate theoretical work. The town has completed flow monitoring, smoke testing, sewer videoing, an annual sewer cleaning program, and implemented the wastewater betterment charge bylaw in 2021. The master infrastructure plan process was another step to realize the extent of the wastewater capacity constraints throughout the town. The idea was to begin in areas with large amounts of vacant unserviced lands. Glen Allen, the business park north of the 103, and east of Norris Street were completed as phases one through three. These master infrastructure planning processes have been important to the further realization of the constraints currently phased, faced with respect to wastewater around Bridgewater, and will be key to the next steps being the creation of development and/or infrastructure charges. The planning strategy and land use bylaw have process requirements related to larger-scale development, namely development agreements and municipal planning strategy and/or land use bylaw amendments that ensure wastewater impacts are understood. However, this ability to determine whether the development can be accommodated with or without system improvements is not available for as-of-right developments via current regulation of the land use bylaw. For clarity, as-of-right development is where the zoning in the land use bylaw allows a proposed use and development of land without discretionary approval of council. As-of-right development is reliant on a development permit issued by the development officer. The issuance of a development permit occurs prior to the issuance of a building permit by the building official. Requesting a sewer connection for new development, if one doesn't exist, requires approval of the town engineer and is typically sought at the building permit stage. The development officer cannot presently refuse the issuance of a development permit based on an infrastructure deficit, as such, because it's not a provision of the land use bylaw for as-of-right development. Basically, the zoning may permit the proposed development, however, when a new or upsized service connection is needed, the town engineer has discretion on whether to provide that approval. This authority is provided for by, or through the Municipal Government Act. The underlying goal of the proposed policy amendments is to regulate development and enable growth where capacity is available in a manner that does not further exacerbate wastewater capacity issues. To accomplish this, staff believe the cleanest approach is to require the downstream sanitary sewer capacity assessment for all development, regardless of type and zone, where a new or larger service connection is necessary to accommodate the development in use, or use. Existing lots with appropriately sized services stubbed at the property line and ready for connection would be excluded. Therefore, policy, proposed policy INF-15 would apply to all designations and zones, and it reads, it shall be the policy of council to require a downstream sanitary sewer capacity assessment for any development that includes a new or upsized sanitary sewer connection, where such an assessment is the responsibility of the developer where information is not available. The town engineer shall have discretion and authority to approve new or upsized service connections, and that decision shall be made in consideration of the available sanitary sewer collection system capacity at the time of application. And then unless further prescribed by agreement, a downstream sanitary sewer assessment and any approval thereof shall be applicable for six months from, from development permit issuance. So the proposed natural exemptions to that policy would be infill opportunity, not, not requiring upsized service, sanitary services, residential conversions, accessory dwelling units where the accessory structure cannot be further subdivided and placed on a separate lot, home-based businesses, and any change of use, including commercial, where upsized sanitary is not required in accordance with the design and construction standards pursuant to the subdivision bylaw. Otherwise, the town engineer would have authority on the provision of new or upsized service connections, and that decision would be made in consideration of the available wastewater collection system capacity at the time of development permit application. Additionally, unless further prescribed by agreement, the downstream sanitary sewer assessment and any approval thereof would be applicable for six months from the determination of the town engineer as mentioned, conditioned on development permit issuance, after which a new assessment would be necessary. So for more clarity, the development would have six months from an approved downstream sanitary sewer assessment to make application for development permit and receive that permit. The development permit comes before the footings are poured or any other construction activity. And as it relates to as-of-right development, staff feel that six months is enough time to obtain a development permit. Should a development permit not be issued within six months of the approved assessment, or if the development permit expires, as it does after one year, the development would need to revisit the assessment. That may mean the assessment then includes additional units within that same sewer shed. However, most often, there is actually very little change in a six-month period, so in that case, it would then be a re-submission of the, of the assessment for a new approval. The proposed amendments to the land use bylaw would include new regulation under the general provisions section to introduce a new submission requirement. So in addition to all other requirements governing land use, any development that includes a new or upsized sanitary sewer connection shall be assessed, and the applicant shall submit the following, downstream sanitary sewer capacity assessment, and that goes on to, to describe what that assessment looks like. But basically, it's a theoretical assessment incorporating upstream flows and downstream flows and pipe sizes in the area. And then where the development officer determines that the town is in possession of the necessary information, as over time, we will accumulate more information, to inform the, the town engineer's decision to approve, the required, the requirements of the downstream sanitary sewer capacity assessment may be waived. Additionally, staff propose an asterisk above the permitted developments of each applicable zone and new provision under the special requirements section of each zone. So that would be in addition to the general provision, and that's to clarify the requirement for a downstream sanitary sewer capacity assessment. Basically, the applicant shall submit the assessment in accordance with municipal planning strategy policy INF-15 and subject to the requirements outlined in, in the general provisions section. So these amendments are intended to be interim in nature. While work progresses on council's strategic priority related to wastewater capacity and development, the development charges project is crucial to the larger goal of removing uncertainty of and reducing the risk to developing both residential and commercial properties in Bridgewater. The development charges project should take approximately two years to reach completion. More immediately, staff will begin investigating or have began to investigate an interim capital cost contribution model or cost sharing policy to help direct staff when council receives requests, requests to cost share on upgrades to wastewater infrastructure. And those would be those not currently included in the 10-year capital program and to support developments that cannot proceed without those infrastructure improvements. The review of the town's planning documents is scheduled to begin in 2025, 26. That process will take approximately three years to completion, and in consideration of a fully modeled wastewater system, planning policy and enabled development regulation can be aligned in a manner to manage the wastewater capacity constraints and growth most effectively, or more effectively. The plan review can also examine other ways to mitigate concern with wastewater capacity. So the proposed wastewater-related amendments should be designed to exist until the planned review is completed. So with that, staff recommend that council give second and final consideration and approve the amendments to the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw with respect to alignment of municipal planning strategy policy and land use bylaw regulation with current wastewater system constraints.
All right, before we jump into questions, you guys don't have to sit or stick around. This is, I mean, you're welcome to stay. I know, it's interesting, it's exciting.
Where'd everybody go?
You don't get to.
So questions from council for Nick on this? This is not our first discussion on this, so I know we've had questions before. Council McDonald?
Have there been any more discussion among staff about that six-month timeline where they've done the assessment and they now have a six-month window, and if that is too short, it's cutting it too close?
Yeah, no, I know that was brought up last time we, we discussed, council was discussing these, these amendments. Yeah, staff did think about that, did, did speak to, we spoke to others regarding the six-month, and, and really, so that's why I did want to provide a little bit more clarity in this presentation, but basically, from an approved assessment, you know, what this is, is requiring is a, a development permit. So, yeah, staff feel that, that is, that should be more than enough time to, for the applicant to put together their development permit application to then receive a development permit, which has, there's a timeline associated with that, so that can't take too long. Six months should be enough time. If it doesn't happen within that six months, it's a reassessment, and it could just, it could very well be that the assessment that was submitted and approved before is still the, the relevant assessment, because in a six-month period of time, there may not be any other development in that subject area that would require a new assessment. But even if it is a new assessment, it, it's just an additional input, so the cost shouldn't be too much of a burden if they do have to reassess.
Okay.
But we do think six months is an appropriate amount of time.
Because it's six months really plus the year, right, with the DA?
Well, with the development permit, so that is the other piece, sorry, thank you. Because once the development permit's issued, the development permit's good for a year, so the building permit would typically, you know, be issued just after the development permit, but there can be another six months, eight months, even 10 months before the building permit's issued and the development permit expires if nothing happens within a year. And if that were to happen, then we'd be back to the beginning of the process. So, you're right, sorry, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, six months plus a year, in effect.
From development permit, not sewer permit?
There, yeah, no sewer permit. There was some discussion around sewer permit.
Yes, it was.
And maybe there, there may be, but nothing.
Not this.
Other questions from council? No? Okay. All right, are there any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic? All right, at this time, then I will close the public hearing and ask council if they are, I'll reconvene regular session. I will note that there's no, there's no appeal for this, after this decision.
That's correct, because it's a policy change.
It's a policy change, so. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Put that on the floor, council call, thank you.
Remove the town council for the Town of Bridgewater, approve chapter 209, a bylaw to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to address development and wastewater capacity issues for as-of-right development, as contained in Appendix A in Document 23-077V dated May 13th, 2024.
Great, thank you, and seconded by Council McDonald for the discussion.
Question?
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Okay, we are down to 6.2, Chapter 197 vending bylaw, this is the second reading, and I will invite Connor to come down and speak to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'll just be reviewing the proposed amendments to the vending bylaw. So I'll get into background. The town's vending bylaw was created to regulate where, when, where, and how people sell food, beverages, and other goods within the Town of Bridgewater in town-owned spaces. beverages, and other goods within the town of Bridgewater in town-owned spaces. Those categories of vending currently include outdoor sales of prepared food, unprepared food, art, and handcrafted goods, mobile canteens, recreation and physical activity classes, and other goods and services at the discretion of the development officer. The rationale for these proposed amendments are following concerns regarding the type of goods being sold in the town through the vending bylaw, specifically relating to cannabis-related goods, and staff were directed to draft amendments to remedy this issue. So just a quick overview of our open vending sites. So we do have two open vending sites, the Open King Street Zone and the Recreational Field Zone, which identify areas throughout the town which vending can occur. The Open King Street Zone identifies seven intersections along King Street that support vending opportunities. Additionally, the open recreation zone, open recreation field zone permits vending opportunities on town-owned properties, zoned recreation or park zones. So there are some associated plans and bylaws with the vending bylaw. Those are the Town Property Bylaw, which regulates how and when town-owned property may be used, so that works in conjunction with the vending bylaw. The Sidewalk Cafe Bylaw regulates the use of sidewalks and town-owned property directly adjacent to existing food and beverage establishments. And finally, the Open Space Plan establishes long-term planning, vision, and management strategy for the town's open space. During staff's review of the vending bylaw, Nova Scotia Public Health staff were approached to seek feedback based on previous correspondence with staff regarding the bylaw. The staff were, Nova Scotia Public Health staff recommended a number of recommendations to staff related primarily to three topics. Those were, first, removing the subjectivity of permitted goods and services within the bylaw; two, ensuring open spaces continue to be used for public use; and three, appropriateness of vending locations within these areas that are described. Following those discussions with Nova Scotia Public Health staff, discussions and concerns, discussions, excuse me, following discussions with Nova Scotia Public Health staff, concerns and recommendation were considered, however, the focus remained on the amendments to the permitted goods. Staff did complete a jurisdictional review, which highlighted goods throughout various jurisdictions with their vending bylaws, within and outside the province. While permissions varied, there were consistencies across some of these areas, which were noted in the following slide. Upon completion of the jurisdictional review, staff compiled a comprehensive list of permitted goods to identify the gaps existing within our bylaw. Of the comprehensive list, some of the uses were outside the scope of our existing vending bylaw, those being busking and flea markets. Busking is currently not regulated by the town, while markets are regulated through the town property and bylaw and land use bylaw. Following the review of that comprehensive list, two additional categories were added to, as proposed amendments to our vending bylaw, those being the sale of clothing and accessories and the sale of plants and flowers. Additionally, the sale of other goods and services, not mentioned above with approval of the development officer, was removed from that list to increase clarity when interpreting the bylaw. Some further amendments that were made include definitions being added to ensure further clarity when reading the bylaw. So those definitions were added for flowers, handcrafted goods, and plants. So I can review those quickly. Flowers means any flowers or flower bud cut from the plant and used decoratively. Handcrafted goods means a work of art or craft made by a painter, photographer, silversmith, weaver, jeweler, candlemaker, leatherworker, or other, other-like artisan. And plants mean any living plant cultivated or wild, or any part thereof that can be planted, propagated, or sold unless regulated by outside organizations or senior levels of government. So finally, with the recommendation, it is recommended that town council for the town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration of the amendments to Chapter 197 vending bylaw as shown in the appendix.
Questions for council? Again, this is second reading, so we kind of had, we had a few questions the last time this came up. Hearing none, so I'm prepared to make a motion. Council Thorburn, thank you.
My way, your worship. I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve second and final consideration of Chapter 210, a bylaw to amend Chapter 197 vending bylaw with respect to text amendments pertaining to permitted goods to differentiate between food and certain types of retail vending as shown in Appendix A of Document Number 24-059A dated May 13, 2024.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Calkin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, thank you, Connor. Okay, we are down to correspondence for action. Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities, Municipal Police Agencies, Opportunities and Challenges. So I know a number of us are headed to Truro on Wednesday to discuss opportunities and challenges. Yeah, I don't know if you want to add?
Just, it's part of the police review that's being conducted by the Police Review Engagement Advisory Committee, and Nova Scotia Federation Municipalities is represented on that committee. So they're soliciting input from municipalities, in particular those municipal police forces, to understand some of the challenges and opportunities that we feel may exist. So there has been some preliminary discussion with the Police Commission. This correspondence was taken to them, and we'll certainly be taking that when we go to Truro on Wednesday to meet with the other municipal units represented by municipal police forces. And from that, the intention is to bring back for councils consideration of possible submission in response to this letter that would outline what some of those challenges are, as well as some of the opportunities that we see.
Any questions on that? Council Thorburn?
Do you think that the existing government will support, supporting the municipal police forces as they do with the RCMP?
In terms of funding?
In terms of funding, yes.
I think that'd be one of the challenges raised, and perhaps one of the opportunities as well. Yeah.
Yeah, so just for council, in case, just a refresher, but also for the public who might not know, and thank you, that's a good question, just to raise this. So there are additional, it's an additional officers program that municipal police services have and RCMP detachments have in municipalities. Same officer duties funded at two, with two different models. So if you have an RCMP police unit, then it is full-cost recovery, and if you have a municipal police force, then the province caps that cost at $100,000 per officer, so not cost recovery. So what Council Thorburn's asking is basically, why, if it's apples-to-apples, is it not funded apples-to-apples?
Right.
So I think that is definitely something to raise, among other things. You know, the province has said that they are reviewing policing. It's one of their priorities to review, and I think this is a rare opportunity, certainly in my 16 years around this table, that there's, that the provincial government is open to looking at what is working, what isn't working, and how can we make it work better? So we will be there, along with all the other municipalities that have municipal police service. Thank you for that question. We will report back.
Yeah, next council meeting.
Yeah. Perfect. Down to, any other questions, sorry, any other questions on that? Okay, down to reports of recommendations, second reading, Chapter 24 Sewer Bylaw Amendments.
Okay. So this is second and final reading, and council so deems advisable, to the public sewer bylaw, and this would help implement the fee changes that were implemented as part of the budget approval process when we looked at the sewer rates. And if you remember, we proposed some new categories for the sewer rate, and those were long-term care facilities, educational institutions, car wash, and auxiliary car wash, large grocery, large industrial. And then where you have a single-unit dwelling that contains a home-based business with a total commercial assessed value of less than 15% of the total assessed value, then one uniform charge, which is, which is the higher of the two, would be charged on that property, as opposed to both. So those are the changes that are being made, is to add those categories and clarify how we treat a home-based business essentially within a house, and to add two definitions for large industrial as well as large grocery. So if council deems advisable, second reading would be in order, and then that would be final reading, upon which we would place a notice in the paper, and at that time, the amendments would be approved, which means that the billing for May would, the sewer billing would contain that.
Okay. Any questions on that? Council Thorburn?
Tim, do we know how many small businesses that would benefit from this change to sewer rates? Because I think it's a good deal, and it's important.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number of how many would benefit from that. I know there are a few properties where we have this situation, and they've been paying the commercial rate. But only a very small portion of the property is assessed that way, so.
But that's quite a saving to the two rates, just to go with the highest, and certainly it'd be a little more fair.
I can't imagine it's an insignificant number. There would be quite a few home-based businesses, so yeah, you're right, that there is, this becomes a savings for them, so.
Okay, great.
Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Tanner, thank you.
I will. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve second and final consideration of Chapter 211, a bylaw to amend Chapter 24 Public Sewer Bylaw with respect to amendments to Part 1, definitions in Part 6, Annual Sewer Charges, Section 28, subsection 2, as shown in Appendix A of Document 24-067 dated April 2, 2024.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Calkin. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. I just, I love the wording of the motion, right? It's like, part this of section this of Appendix this of document that. Some is in Roman numerals.
Throw me off for a second.
It's fantastic. I was reading along going, okay, is he gonna, just remember, like, part six was whatever, the Star Trek movie, not Search for Spock, that was part three. Anyway, all my Roman numerals knowledge is based on Star Trek movies. Okay. I don't know why the public doesn't stay. It's so much fun. Okay, moving on. This is our proposed summer schedule, so this is, you know, routine. Every summer, we do kind of drop off the last two meetings of July, the last two meetings of August, condense them, so we do have to make a motion of council to note the changes of that schedule. Is someone prepared? Thank you, Council McDonald.
Move that town council for the town of Bridgewater set the 2024 summer meeting schedule as follows. July discussion session will be Tuesday, July 2. Regular council meeting on Monday, July 8. August discussion session will be on Tuesday, August 6, and regular council meeting on Monday, August 12.
Great, thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. All right, 9.3 CAO Procurement Awards Report. It's like your, like the Grammys. It's the CAO Procurement Awards Report.
Yeah. It's important.
You're gonna get cut off by the music.
Yeah. We should do that for the strategic priorities.
Yeah, really.
All right, go ahead.
So this, this is a report from the Director of Finance, and since this is really the only agenda item, I said I would present it to council, that they are required for the procurement policy to prepare a report for council that identifies any of those awards that have been done by myself as a CAO, where the, that goes up to a maximum threshold of 250,000. So if you remember, we amended the procurement policy so that when we go to tender or RFP, those have values of 50,000 or 100,000 and more, that council's approval of that award is required when it's over 250. If it's under 250,000, then I can award that and report to council on that award. In addition to that, you do have some other items listed within your procurement policy about annual awards that the CAO is specifically authorized to do, and those are listed. So you see in there, I believe it's gravel, it's gravels for all of our roadwork, and that, that is in excess of the 250,000, but it's specifically listed as able to be awarded by the CAO. So this report is provided for information. There is no motion or any decision for council to make, but certainly, if you have any questions, ask away.
Any questions of the CAO? Council Calkin?
Can you just expand on the lime system replacement design?
So that was to CBCL. It was the only bidder for the work required, so that's why it was awarded to them. In terms of the exact project, I'd have to have engineering explain what that is, but I suspect it's to do with our water treatment. We can get that information for you, exactly what, want to know why we needed the lime replacement?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I believe that was on the PSC's agenda, if I remember correctly, as something that we have a big tank outside the plant, but I can get you the specifics on that.
Make sure that gets around. Other questions? Okay, thank you. Next item is for Toronto Curling Club Designated Community Fund Project Application. So this, we've had a number of these, so this is the Curling Club.
Yeah.
Asking for theirs. So do you?
Yeah, so it's for, it's for, it's for new projects that they have identified that they'd like to be able to have the town collect funds for and issue charitable receipts. So they've listed the projects that they would like to see fall under this program, and if council is agreeable, they do meet our criteria. They say it's an ammonia surge drum, curling stones, and ice scraper. And they hope to complete these acquisitions within three years.
So this would be people who make a donation on behalf of the Curling Club, they make it to the town, so they would get a tax receipt, then we would disburse those funds, similar to what we do for the fieldhouse. Someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor Fager?
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 97, Designated Community Project Fund Policy, approve the DCPF application submitted by the Bridgewater Curling Club with a project end date of March 31, 2027, as contained in Document 24-080 dated April 23, 2024.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Down to 9.5 Outdoor Pool Sponsorship. So this is, you know, we have a, just for some background, the outdoor pool has had a number of sponsors over the last few years that has helped dramatically in keeping the pool not only open, but to allow us to make a number of improvements to the pool as well, so.
Yeah. So this is for $11,000, and it's marinated sponsorship for naming rights for Oregans South Shore Subaru for the outdoor pool, and it is for this fiscal year, '24, '25 only. So next year, we'll be going out again and seeking sponsors. So in the report, you'll note that we have a total sponsorship of 21,750 thus far this year, so this is the larger of the sponsorships that have been awarded, and we still have a few more sponsorships to go that we'll be, that we'll be looking for. I believe we had 24,000 in sponsorship revenue and 19,000 today.
It's fantastic. The community response, the business response to this is fantastic, and Patrick and I were having this discussion earlier when Representatives of the United Way were in, and talking about just the difference over the last number of years, how many local businesses and, you know, some of our larger national, international businesses, how, how much they're really stepping up with these kind of sponsorships. And I think it really, you know, it speaks to their pride in the community, and so, you know, I know I can speak on behalf of everyone on council. know, I know I can speak on behalf of everyone on council, I thank you to all these sponsors, whether it's the pool, or the bus, or community events, and parades, and things like that. So I know, I know the outdoor pool is vital to the community as another place for families to go, for recreation and some family time, so thank you to Oregans, but also all the sponsors who are doing that. I don't know if anyone has any questions. If not, is someone prepared to make a motion? Council Coughlin?
Excuse me. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the sponsorship and naming rights offer from Oregans South Shore Subaru for the Bridgewater outdoor pool in the amount of $11,000 for the '24-'25 year, and authorize execution of the agreement as contained in Document Number 24-085.
Thank you. Seconded by everybody. Council Tanner, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to our last agenda item, 9.6, Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report. So that's just there for the community's perusal, and just a reminder that all the documents that council has are available on the town's website under Town Council, and then you'll see agendas, and you'll see all the documents, and so everything we have is there, including this report. So I found it very interesting to, they, they were putting on that workshop over the last month or so in the, in the 40s, seniors workshop, and they ran out of space because it was so well-attended. So, I mean, it's, I thought that was fantastic, but just, you know, and they, they thanked the community for stepping up and providing more space, so incredible program. So that's there for council's reading, and that for the public as well. Which takes us to the end of our agenda. We have an in-camera meeting following this to, for contract negotiations under Section 222E of the Municipal Government Act. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Council Tanner, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. We are adjourned.